I. And just Danny, I don't see Lauren on the screen, so maybe let me double check. Okay. That's awesome to hear. Uh, also, we can also just start for the official record Tiffany with roll call. Thank you.
Thank you Holly. Commissioner Bab. Commissioner Barakahan. Commissioner Keldron. Commissioner Chacon. Commissioner Courtney. Commissioner Delaney. Commissioner Egman. Commissioner Garcia Bower. Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Commissioner Greer.
Yeah, you need to.
Commissioner Limon. Commissioner Ochoa. Commissioner Prophet. Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Whitman. Commissioner Wilkin. So everyone just, you know, we know due to the absence of a quorum, we can only discuss informational items and the executive directors here and can go ahead and start that process. It will not be voting today and will move the voting item of the approval of the last meeting minutes to the October meeting. So there's no vote required.
Thank you Tiffany. I do want to make the opportunity Lisa or Joelle, if you did see any issues with last meeting minutes that needed to be corrected, it's good to make note of that now. And okay, and Tiffany, it looks like we have Commissioner Bab and Commissioner Prophet also joining us.
Thank you. I'm in the attendance.
Um, awesome. Well, we were just taking roll call. We noted that we do not have quorum, but if there are any changes to the meeting minutes from last meeting, we could take that discussion item up and note it for approval at the next meeting. Commissioner Prophet or Chair Bad, do you guys have any changes to last week's meeting minutes to note?
Nope, I do not.
Awesome. Chair Bab, I'll give this meeting back over to you.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late. It's never a dull day with two days of session. So that's always fun and we probably are missing some of my colleagues from from the building because they're doing the good work that goes into the last two days of session. So Tiffany, can I have a roll call or do I not have to do that? Because we know we don't have quorum.
Yeah, no, we don't. We just took it and I added both of you and Commissioner Prophet to the roll call. So we have four of you, which we know we do not have a quorum. So our voting of the meeting minutes will take place at the end of October meeting.
Got it. Okay. So then I'm gonna do my, well, those were my chair remarks. Good to see everybody. Thank you for being here and I'm gonna move us along because I want to keep us on schedule. So I'm gonna put it back to Holly and Darcy to talk about the blueprint and then we will open it up and have some discussion around that.
Great. Well, thank you. As many of you know, you've seen a lot of communication from me about this very exciting adventure we are on at the commission with working on this statewide blueprint. A little bit of background and as a reminder, so we, we went into developing this blueprint based on funding we got from the Women's Recovery Response Dollars. And so we use those dollars to invest in research by the UC Berkeley's Policy Lab. And what they provided for us is a breadth of information on data that they were able to to gather on sort of the economic impact of women during COVID. This blueprint is really an opportunity to actually, for the first time, develop a new set of content and perspective from the commission. And so our goal is to have this blueprint this fall. We'll go into some dates and details. I want to give a big shout out to my team, specifically Darcy Totten, who has been the lead on this project. And the work of our partners with the California Research Bureau, who also did a whole swath of literature review to help us round out what we understood of the data, as well as our own ongoing deep dive and sort of oversight of new information coming in, which is hitting us daily on a lot of different things. We know women anecdotally and from what we have experienced in our own lives, we're having a hard time staying in the workforce, juggling dual roles. We know it was even harder for women who were underserved, under-resourced and women of color especially. And so we wanted to take this sort of intersectional lens and look at it from what we had the opportunity to have resources to do in our research. So with that, Danny, you want to open the PowerPoint for us and we'll get right on in. Great. California Blueprint for Women's Pandemic Economic Recovery. Next slide. And I think it's a little short, Danny, if you want to open up full screen and maybe play.
There we go.
Awesome.
Well, it's not a meeting without a technical challenge. We can probably also just get started on the overview too, if that's.
Yes.
Cool.
Let's do that. Um. Okay. Well, I sort of gave an overview a little bit initially, but again, this document is going to be sort of a foundation for which the commission can work from. We see this as an opportunity to look at not only the from the economic lens of the pandemic for women, but what can we also do to understand how women were impacted as it relates to like their unemployment insurance uptake, debt levels? How did CalFresh benefits help support them? And most importantly, how do we look at this from an intersectional lens? From, and as we will talk about the data that we actually do have access to, and more importantly, the data that isn't collected to talk about how do we continue to be a voice for all women as it relates to resources and policy that we are pushing for at a statewide level. Next slide. So the goals of the blueprint, really, how do we position the commission to be a go-to source on relevant and leading issues facing California's women? At the commission, we should be seen, we should be seen as a expert in understanding kind of the issues at hand and using our voice to really champion those issues to advance public policy and most importantly, resources, not only from the commission's perspective, but also to programs and policies at the local level, whether that's supporting our local commissions, as well as direct service providers who are really doing the work on the ground to help improve the lives of women and girls. Next slide. I shared a little bit about our role with our partners, UC Berkeley Policy Lab, the Research Bureau and the team. Next slide. And so here's what I will actually kick it to you, Darcy, if you want to walk through a little bit about the structure of each section and some of the key outcomes.
Thank you. So the report itself is segmented into six sort of big bucket areas that follow some of the individualized policy work that California Policy Lab did for us. We started off by trying to set a baseline, right? Where, what was the economic status of women before the pandemic hit? And what we found is that they went into it significantly worse off already largely due to existing gender and race and gender disparities. So women had to cope with a much greater economic burden when it hit and are still coping with that now as we're sort of coming out the other side. So one of the things that we really tried to look at were around gender disparities, not just in earnings such as with the pay gap, but also what that equaled, right? So women had almost 42% less in retirement savings than men did going into 2019. They had less money in the bank. They may have had different levels of access to credit. Almost half of all working women nationwide prior to the pandemic in 2019 held what's considered a low-paying job at that point. And so that's a little bit different state to state, but the overarching there, it sits around like 10, 1089 an hour, I think it is. And a significant percentage of those jobs were held by women of color. Okay, move to the next slide. So then the second section, we really looked at how the virus hit women and how it hit them differently in these three key areas and their health at work and at home. Next slide. So the impact to health is really, it's really, really specific. The men and women contracted COVID-19 at basically the same rate. Men were more likely to die of the virus. That has a significant impact on the women sort of in in their lives and in their families. Death and infection rates were also significantly correlated with race, Latino and Black California, and saw the highest death rates and have had the most significant impacts to life expectancy overall that we know. That's from data that was collected. So that's something we'll get into a little bit later, but there's definitely missing data that we don't have access to yet. And so that's one of the things that we've gotten out of this report is what, what else can we do moving forward? What other research has come up that's needed? We saw huge rates of anxiety and depression during the height of the pandemic and ongoing reports of anxiety and depression now. We think some of the research we've seen indicates that some of those additional stressors are in not just economic, but also a result of just collective grief of loss of people mourning of people having to add additional caregiving, helping children process loss. And then finally, the research currently indicates that women are significantly more likely to experience long COVID, even if they've had a mild infection. So they are experiencing additional illness, maybe three months after initial infection that can last anywhere from a few extra months to years. There are people who are still sick with COVID who got it right in that first wave at the beginning of 2020. And that number is very high. We'll have an expert here from Brookings Institution to talk about that a little bit later. But the estimation based on the CDC count right now is that almost 6 million people in California are currently living with long COVID. That is a huge impact to the workforce. Next slide. So women at work, we know, we know some of this. Occupational segregation appears to have played an enormous role in some of these negative, negative economic outcomes. And we already know from our work around pay equity, it's a significant contributor to gender and racial wage gaps. So female-dominated professions like retail, hospitality, education, they had the largest share of job losses and sort of the were the slowest to add those jobs back. So this really disproportionately impacted women, particularly women of color. We have some data that also indicates that women with disabilities pre-existing or predating COVID were the most affected. Roughly 8% of that group ended up jobless during the worst part of the pandemic. Non-citizens lost their jobs at a enormous rate compared to naturalized citizens and native-born citizens as well. Next slide. And then finally, the impact on women at home, leading up to the pandemic, women were already taking what got the term that was coined in the seventies was the second shift that they were already doing the bulk of housework and childcare and elder care. And then when schools closed, that got much, much worse. So the impact that we looked at was largely to the workforce. One out of 10 women with children in California is currently not working as compared to women without children. And largely, we think that's a result of the added caregiving. There is some research that tried to put dollar amounts on the economic sort of loss of women who are not in the workforce because they are taking on these other responsibilities. And so we've included that in the report. We've got an estimate nationwide of roughly $840 billion in potential economic output. If women's participation in the workforce wasn't what they call muted due to these additional caregiving responsibilities, if they were able to work full-time, full-speed ahead, focused on career. And we also really looked at childcare and the way that the childcare system is set up in this country, it's a little bit patchwork. And it fell apart during the worst parts of the pandemic and hasn't been fully put back together yet. But we were able to look at data that showed that some of the aspects of the American Rescue Plan. In fact, not only shored up that system, but provided better outcomes than what had happened before the pandemic and sort of gave us a roadmap moving forward for potential interventions. Next slide. We get to strengthen social safety nets. Holly, do you want to take this one?
Sure. Next slide. As Darcy had mentioned, you know, we had learned that there were some programs that really helped support women and their families during the pandemic that were temporary or enhanced during the pandemic. One of which we would like to call out being the child tax credit program that was implemented at a federal level, as well as the student debt loan pause and freeze program. We know that there is a new student debt program that is excitingly out there for, for women and everyone today, but hopefully we can continue to be a voice or we can ensure that those who need it most, like women who have greater debt ratio to, to income, certainly get their fair share of that. Next slide. Oh, section four, how women are faring now that the economic recovery has eased or the lockdowns have eased. So one thing we had noticed is that the industries dominated by women are actually recovering at a much slower rate. This is where I think we believe at the commission, we can have a strong voice and shedding to light, how do we think about equitable recovery? When we think about women who are not able to go back to work or go back to work to jobs that are no longer there or where more occupational segregation was persistent and they have lost those jobs or where they are now needing to shift to be in a workforce that is growing. So these could be women who are mid-career, looking into industries like technology or other industries that are booming. How do we get them resources that help to support their recovery, their technical or educational training to really support how they are able to thrive for the future, provide for their families and continue to be, you know, productive and ensure that they are able to thrive. You know, one thing that we had seen, especially as a commission that really focuses in on pay equity and equal paydays is that we have seen that the gender wage gap only grew during the pandemic. And so, you know, I look at this number, California's pay gap of $46 billion and even higher up to $61 billion for race and ethnicity is really, you know, quite shocking. And we really need to look at how do we implement stronger tools that sort of diminish and close the gender wage gap? And continue to, you know, offer women and women of color higher paid jobs to be able to provide for their families and their livelihood. Next slide. Darcy, do you want to take section five?
Yep, got it. Um, so section five, we started to look at, you know, all right, lockdowns have eased, restrictions have eased, jobs are coming back. Where are women now? And the answer is that because they started with structural economic disadvantages, they are continuing to have structural economic disadvantages that are essentially made worse by the time that we took out of the workforce. So that was time that people weren't saving, they weren't putting things towards retirement, they may have switched jobs, they may have, you know, spent time out of the workforce, it may have impacted what their job was. Plus, it made the pay gap, pay gap worse. So there is significant work to do specifically for women moving forward, even though the acute phase of the crisis may feel like it is over. So it added, the estimation is 36 years to the time it's going to take for women to reach wage parity with men, which brings the full time up to 135 years before we all get paid equally for the same work. In California specifically, we found that if all working women and working single moms earned the same amount of money as men in comparable roles, the poverty rate would drop by about 40% immediately. California Policy Lab specifically was starting to look at third-year pandemic economic recovery data that shows that the employment gap between women who do and do not have children hasn't diminished at all. And there is still an employment gap between women and men. There are less women in the workforce largely due to additional sort of expectations and cultural expectations that they will handle things like childcare. Interventions such as the child tax credit, apologies for that typo, now it's like the only thing I see. Were unique and are a very exciting part of this report. We found that combined with the direct cash payments and some of the expanded unemployment and SNAP benefits and the student loan pause from the CARES Act, the poverty rate fell enormously. So what we've ended up with is actually data that can show the relative value economically of some of these social impact efforts and policy interventions. We, for a brief period of time, reduced child poverty in the state of California from 20% to 12% due to these interventions. Then we pulled the interventions back and backup it has gone. But what it has left us with is a roadmap. If we want to end child poverty in California, we know how now. We can prove how to do it. Next slide. So that leads us to section six, which is, well, now what? Uh, next slide. And where we have landed is the first most important thing is that a gender lens on policymaking absolutely can't be optional and it has to be intersectional. We don't have single issue lives. We don't have single issue impacts. And most importantly, it's going to be critical moving forward that we not conflate women and children, right? So oftentimes in policy or in budgeting, we will allocate funds or resources for child, for sort of child-focused issues and ignore the women attached to those children. And so we've learned quite a bit about sort of what is needed on both of those sides. We've also realized that there is a huge chunks of data that's just missing specifically on various populations of women in the state where there just wasn't enough investment in gathering data. But there's also a sort of ongoing need for figuring out how to gather and then report out intersectional data. So it is not enough to know, for example, the impact to women in an industry or the impact to women of color in an industry. We need to also understand the impact to, say, disabled women of color in that industry or specific race and ethnicity gaps, or whether or not they are also LGBTQ, whether or not they also are parents. So one of the things that we've consistently discussed is how important it is for there to be a direct system of support for women. We have, you know, been talking through the Women's Recovery Response Program about investing in that existing network of local commissions and trying to grow a more diverse representation of women's voices across government, as well as providing immediate relief, right? Sending resources to direct service providers and supporting the economic recovery of women and girls. The next piece of that is also long-term policy intervention and what we can do for the next, not just year, but the next five years, the next 10 years to ensure an equitable recovery. Next slide. So that brings us to this. Yes.
Pretty good to the rollout. Can we try to move that box? I think it's covering some of the slides.
There we go.
There's some, there's, I, I've tried to take it away. Sorry about that.
No worries. Okay. Okay, thanks. Sorry, Darcy, keep going.
All right. So this is a rough timeline for the blueprint rollout. And forgive us, some of the dates are a little squishy because they have to go through things like graphic design processes and we are still soliciting feedback from commissioners and going through editing. But so roughly where we are right now is starting the process of designing. We are making sure that the entire report will be as accessible as possible in as many ways as possible. With the idea that we'll have it completely out and released to a variety of audiences this year and ready to launch into policymaking for fiscal year 2023, come January. Next slide. So okay, uh, the components are basically this. It is weighty. It's going to be a hefty amount of things. There will be a comprehensive printed report. It's currently sitting around 260 pages long. If you have no need for an artistically designed doorstop, you will also have infographics, fact sheets, pullouts, separate executive summaries, separate policy recommendations, a web-based way to access and digital education campaign. So this is the full opportunity for accessing as many different audiences as possible who can use this data. I, and also everything online will be ADA accessible. And next slide, and I will kick it back to Holly for this last piece.
So I'm sure many of you commissioners have been like, okay, what is our role? How, how do we support this? How do we give feedback? There have been a number of sort of instructions from the executive summary, providing that feedback. You know, because we need to ensure that we do not violate any badly keen laws. I'd love to hear directly from you. Or you can go directly to Darcy, particularly on the content or questions about the research or any sort of thoughts that you have. We are in the process of compiling policy recommendations that will accompany this document. You've also seen those instructions from me. Michelle Turan, Wolfork is our policy director. She had sent that email out also compiling and composing feedback. We are on a tight deadline, so I appreciate your response to the urgent request. I know the commissioners on this phone have been especially active and vocal, so I really appreciate the feedback and the role. I want to give a shout out to Lisa Greer, who is volunteered to actually go line by line as an editor in her profession and her work as an author. So she is also giving us an opportunity to really go through it. And you know, I think in looking forward, also, how can commissioners be an active voice on this work? Maybe there are parts of this blueprint that really speak to you, your subject matter expertise, the networks that you hold. Maybe there's pieces of policy that in your own, you know, personal profession, you have experience in. Our goal is that we will, of all the policy concepts, and trust me when I say all, we have like run the gamut of like, what are big pie in the sky down to little technical changes that can be made. We are hoping to really streamline this into a sort of like much more concise takeaway of our top policy issues that we as a commission will champion going into the 2023 session. We hope commissioners will be inspired to want to give testimony, to lobby on bills. We hope legislative commissioners will maybe want to sponsor bills. Inspired by, you know, these policy recommendations. So I, I think there's a really incredible breadth of opportunity to be involved and engaged. I also anticipate that this blueprint will also help lay the groundwork for a strategic planning group to really think about long-term goals that we want to reach and achieve in terms of measuring impact that we want to see for women, you know, 10 years from now. And also in the immediate needs that we see. So I just want to, you know, thank you guys in advance for any feedback and thoughts that you have provided. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to connect with you and, and, you know, talking your ear off about all the wonderful things that we have found. And I say wonderful, and it's not really great news for women, but it is inspiring to see that we can see a path forward and that the commission can take an active role in championing the change I think we want to see for women and girls. So with that next slide, I was if I missed anything here. That concludes our presentation. I know that the executive committee did need to talk about this. I want to, Lauren, give you and your colleagues on the executive an opportunity to provide any comment or thoughts to their fellow commissioners. If that's something you guys want to chime in on.
Sure thing. So wow, that's a lot. This is going to be a really great body of data and research to tell the story about what happened in California, women and girls, and those that identify as such during this time. So really excited about that. The Paul, the executive committee and the policy committee had an opportunity to sort of look at this and have some feedback. And I think a couple of things that I'll extend to my colleagues to really dive deeper into, as Holly has asked, is really looking at the breadth and depth of what we're doing on the policy side. Because these are things that us, you know, as members of this commission, we will then move forward in policies. So I really want us to feel rooted and sound with those recommendations because at any point, we may be sort of carrying a bill, you know, on that effort. So I would say, yes, we're going to continue to get the blueprint refined. Thank you to Commissioner Greer for. Thank you to Commissioner Greer for leaning into that work. But I, we will be taking our time with the policy recommendations because I want to make sure they are reflective of what all of our colleagues would like to put forward for future recommendations. So the, that was sort of, I'm looking at Lisa or others or Joel, anyone else that was on that call that has feedback around the blueprint and any other findings that we might want to sort of call out for discussions that staff has a little bit more direction as they continue this work.
I'll just actually, my comment is, and I unfortunately I didn't, wasn't able to participate at the executive committee, but that pre-briefing I had with Holly and Darcy, I just wanted to say a huge thank you for being able to articulate such a massive amount of data and research. It, it is exciting, thrilling for us to be able to find a way to really make this, you know, our strategic priority and to really do so much more for women in so many ways. So I'm very excited about staying engaged and offering my experience as it, you know, was explained in a couple of areas in the, in the blueprint that I support. And I hope that we, we do more around. So again, thank you. It's, it's a lot of work in front of us, but it's, it's a huge opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Gomez. Anyone else have, I'm going to open it up to every, all commissioners for feedback or things that you want more clarity on from the team? What can we do to answer questions or make this project more of a, get it off the ground and off, off to the races? So Commissioner Proudfoot or Greer, any comments or questions around the blueprint?
Well, I think you know what mine are, and I think they're in the future recommendations that there be some intentionality focused on our Indigenous women because they're, it's limited in this report. And so I know with the future reporting that that will be an area in the focus that won't be marginalized or overlooked. So I appreciate that. But overall, the report looks great and amazing and, you know, data is, is power. So I appreciate that. So we can make some good policy recommendations.
Yeah, I guess I'll just very quickly, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's a monumental project and it's amazing that you guys were able to do it, that staff was able to do it as new people were coming on and in the doldrums of summer. But of course, you guys didn't have any doldrums because you were working on this. So, but it's, 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 it's really fantastic. And I'm very much looking forward to seeing sections of it and how we section those pieces off so that we make it more consumable. And as, as some of you know, I'm also very interested in figuring out a way to have a, an executive summary that's less than 18 pages. So a smaller version of that, yes. So that just doesn't work for me. So the 18-page thing, in fact, 15, I don't think would work either. So, so there'll be a, I don't know, maybe it's the, the, the short version and the long version or something. But anyway, just, just kudos to you and your staff and for, and to Lauren for figuring this all out and making it happen.
Yes, I echo that sentiment. And I know Darcy and the team are also going to work on some one-page fact sheets for me by our different constituency groups. So, you know, once we get the whole build out, we'll have a page for, you know, the economic, what we've learned about Black women or what we've learned about the API community and, you know, LGBTQ plus community. So the shorter and sweet sound bites, I call them nuggets. They hear from me all the time because we just don't have the capacity, I think, to sort of really get into 18 pages all the time. So, all right, Holly, do you need any other feedback, recommendations or information around the blueprint from us?
No, the only other thing I wanted to bring to light, and I'm going to kick this to Darcy, are some of the concepts about future research and investments that we know we had seen, because I do think that's an important piece to Dr. Prudential's point. And also where we just really saw gaps in access to data as much as we wanted to really dive into opportunities to, to tell the full, complete story. There's definitely opportunity. So Darcy, I know we created like a short, not a short list, but like a, a list.
We created a very long list, which I don't have right in front of me, but I will off the top of my head. So the concept of this report being a foundation from which we can build and do future research was really, really critical. So we started with the data we could get our hands on. That does not mean that is the only data we wanted. And so we are really hoping to make future investments in, as you mentioned, Commissioner Profet and Commissioner Webb, specific population-focused data, but also solution-focused data. So one of the things you will notice that is missing is an assessment of sort of housing and what happened to renters, right? That's just a whole separate report. Or you're missing an assessment of what happened to veterans specifically. So there are some key elements that belong in this report that we want to do the work on that actually just require another six months of report writing. And so we are hoping also for your input on that in addition to the policy section. If there are things that you just really want to see, you haven't seen anywhere else, you don't see here, please let us know so we can start sort of looking around for who we need to partner with to do that work and how we best need to do that. So I appreciate it.
And I will also further add, if you guys know of professionals and experts doing work in some of these fields that it would be helpful for us to talk to, whether they are research institutions that we may want to think about partnering with to Darcy's point in the future. And I will also make one little final note. One, one thing that is really clearly missing is an assessment of specifically girls. So while we have a very strong women's economic platform, because this is about women in the workforce or not in the workforce, we know at the commission, we need to build a girl's agenda and that's going to require very different interventions, very different, you know, set of studies to understand what girls need to thrive in the future. And so I think it's very notable that there's a lot of opportunity, but, and there are a lot of things we could do. And so commissioner input put, whether it's through the strategic planning, direct conversation or these types of discussion is really helpful for us to sort of build that plan for how we want to invest those resources and continue to be sort of this go-to hub of very helpful, powerful data and continue to position us as somebody who has that data to back up what could be possible in terms of solutions with our leadership.
Someone may have come off mute. Judy, can you make me mute? Thank you. Thank you for that. The other thing I'll call out is we have made, I'm working with Holly and Michelle to make sure that the local commissions have input to the policy recommendations. A lot of our local commissions have done some really cool things. I'll call out Santa Clara County where I know that they have, their county subsidizes like childcare for participating boards and commissions. What are those sort of local policy wins or successes that we can kind of uplift in our recommendation? So for folks on this call that are grantees or are local commissioners at the, for local commission level, please reach out to the staff to sort of make sure we have that input from you in terms of policy recommendations. Because now is the time to make sure we're sort of making sure we're getting all the voices for this new exciting project. So, all right, we're 11:45. We're a little bit early. Can someone tell me if our first panel guest is here? If not, I will continue with some more discussion, but if so, I'm happy to start thinking about doing that earlier.
Danny, do you see Katie Bach on the phone or on the call?
I don't see Katie Bach on, on the line.
She was planning on dialing in around noon, so I think we have a few more minutes.
Okay, um, so let's see what else we have. So we've talked about the blueprint. We have some recommendations. You're going to work with us on, is it possible, Holly, that you could give us or have Michelle, maybe in this little 15 minutes, we've gone a little off script, give an update on any of the bill work, bills that sort of made it through the House or anything we're excited about there? And then that should maybe get us to noon for our first hearing?
It's very timely. Michelle's in the Capitol now, but I know she's on the phone. Michelle, are you at a point where you can come off mute and give a little roundup of where we are with some of our policy pieces? What's made it off the floor? What's at the governor's desk?
Absolutely. Yes. Let me go ahead and just step aside over here just one second. Sorry, y'all. Thank you so much. I have some very exciting news to share. SB 1162 Limone Pay Equity Pay Transparency Bill got off of the assembly floor yesterday with 54 eye votes, which we were very pleasantly surprised about. We had originally concerns that this bill might not even have the 41 originally, but we were able to convince several of the moderate members to come on board. That bill now heads back to the Senate for its final concurrence vote. I'm reading right now to see if they're going to bring it up this morning. They're going kind of slow. So I will definitely let everyone know as soon as that bill comes up. I'm also happy to report that AB 1287, our pink tax bill, also passed out of the Senate yesterday. And that will now head back to the assembly for its final concurrence vote. That is also going to come up in a little bit. We're on concurrent items now in the assembly. We still have about 50 bills to go, but I will definitely let everyone know. But it looks like both of those bills could very well go to engrossing and enrolling, then off to the governor's desk. So that is very good news for our sponsored bills. We also in the last week have had, I believe it's eight bills that have moved over to the governor's desk that we are in support of. And that would then leave seven bills that are still moving through the process, the two that I mentioned that were sponsors of and others that we are in support of. Any questions about any of that? Really excited. It looks like it's going to be a really good end of session for us. Fingers crossed. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have on these bills.
Okay, now seeing anybody pop off mute. Thank you, Michelle, for that, like tidbit. I think it's really helpful for folks to know where we're at with our legislative platform. And really exciting news is to hear about the pink tax. For those of y'all who were around last year, we, you know, we didn't quite get to the finish line. And so I'm really excited to see that bill be advancing. In addition to Commissioner Lamone's bill, which is really cool. It would actually allow for the salary ranges to be posted in all job descriptions. And that's a huge win for, I think, our work in sort of the pay equity frame. New York is the first state to do it, so we would be following behind them and their good work to be able to, you know, have our, our students who come out of college who don't know what to ask for in that first job, like have a range to work with. I think that that's really, really helpful, at least, you know, from my personal experience. So thank you, Michelle. We'll, we'll be looking out for the update on the rest of the bills. Holly, do you want me to just take a 10-minute break and wait for our hearing? Or do you have any updates that we can kind of power through in this next 10 minutes?
I have just a few updates and then we can pause if, if that's helpful. I do want to draw your attention, commissioners, to your timeline put in the packet. There are some key dates that get us through the end of the year, including our upcoming commission meetings. One thing that we are doing with the upcoming equal paydays is we're planning grantee visits to really sort of shine a light on the work happening locally to help women in their sort of economic recovery as they continue to try to, you know, thrive. We have a visit coming up for Moms Equal Payday here locally in Sacramento. We're hoping to get down to LA for Black Women's Equal Payday. We are working on planning a visit for Native Women's Equal Payday. That is both in Northern California and possibly High North and Humboldt. And then finally Latina Equal Payday at the end of the year. I am hoping that we are able to also schedule our last meeting of the year in person to do sort of a year-end roundout of all the work that we're having. We're also doing an in-person training of all of our grantees around the same timeframe. So, you know, we stay tuned for more details. And if I reach out to you about visits in your community, be on the lookout for that, which Tiffany Barto obviously is leading. So thank you. And those are just a few flags for your attention. We can break for maybe 10 minutes, Lauren, and reconvene at noon on the dot.
Be perfect. Let's do that. We'll be back at noon with our first hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Folks, we'll get started in just a second. Oh, my apologies, Lauren. All right, okay. Yeah, let's give folks some time to just come back over. And then I believe we're going to get started with our first hearing. I believe we're still waiting on Katie Bach. Okay. Do we have Hisha Roy? Maybe we can switch them and, and come back to Ms. Bach? And I believe we're still waiting on Commissioner Roy as well.
Lauren, let's give them two minutes and then if not, um,
Have Commissioner joining. We have Commissioner Roy joining now.
Oh. Great. Chair back, we have Katika Roy.
Got it. Okay. Okay, for a few minutes to get such, okay, awesome. So, all right, I'm going to get started because I'm sticking with the time. We are going to just ship some folks around. There might be some technical difficulties with our first panel or our first guest and Q and A. So I'm going to introduce the folks I see on my screen and then we'll allow them to sort of get going with their presentations, followed by a bit of Q and A. So the first person I see is Kasia Roy, and apologies if I'm saying your name wrong. Please correct me, you know, when you go into your presentation. She is the CEO of Pipeline Equity. Ms. Roy is the ambassador for the intersectional gender equity in the workplace and beyond. She's a gender economy and CEO and founder of the pipeline, an award-winning SaaS platform that leverages artificial intelligence to identify and drive economic gains through intersectional gender equity lens. The pipeline platform was named one of Time's best inventions in 2019 and Fast Company's 2020 World's Most Innovative Companies. A former programmer and a user interfacer and experienced designer, a data analytics expert, she harnesses her unique combination of skills at pipeline. So I'm going to, wow, what an amazing resume. Thank you for being here and spending some time with us. And I'm going to allow you to jump right into your presentation. We're so excited to have you. Thank you for being here.
Of course. Thank you for having me. It's, in my name, my first name is hard to pronounce. It's Katika, like not a K, but with a K. Yeah, it's Hungarian. My father was Hungarian. I, I'm just going to do a verbal presentation of testimony. I don't have a present, like a PowerPoint or anything like that. So just to set the expectations there. And so I've been asked to talk today, and I'll keep it to two to four minutes as asked, about essentially the triple whammy, the economic fallout from the pandemic, rising inflation, as well as the impending recession on women. So if you'll, if you'll bear with me, I have prepared some testimony to share with you. And happy to answer any questions afterward. So if misrepresentation is alive, then our economic indicators are living in sin. Most policy officials rely on aggregate measures to watch the economy. However, the problem with aggregate measurements is that they mislead. In my research, I apply the intersectional gender lens to disaggregate data by gender plus race and ethnicity and age. plus race and ethnicity and age. In doing so, we find that economic events are not gender neutral, and our policy response to these events shouldn't be either. For example, inflation has been vaporizing everyone's economic security, and especially women. The prices of goods and services targeted toward women have risen twice as fast as those as targeted toward men. It's the pink tax on steroids. This is happening against the backdrop of a she-session that wiped out twenty-nine years of hard-earned progress toward gender equity in the labor market. If we included the 1.17 million women missing from the labor market since the beginning of the pandemic, women's real unemployment rate would be 4.6%. For Latinas specifically, it would be 7.1%. And for Black women, it would be 7.6%. Aggressive interest rate hikes only aggravate these inequitable unemployment rates. In fact, tighter monetary policy causes companies to consolidate their workforces to the rhythm of last hired, first fired. And that means women and Black employees are usually the first to get the cut. This is particularly concerning because since 1982, more than half of Black US households with children have been headed by breadwinner moms. And Black breadwinner moms have the most egregious gender pay gap of any cohort of women in the workforce. They earn just forty-four cents on the dollar earned by breadwinner dads. In other words, our future entrepreneurs, policymakers, and essential workers who live in households headed by breadwinner moms have become the collateral damage of inequity. In the United States, women hold 67% of all student loan debt. They work 58% of minimum wage jobs. They pay 7% more for pink goods and services half of the time. They face 0.04% higher mortgage rates than men. They make up 56% of those living in poverty. They perform ninety more minutes of unpaid labor per day than men. It's time that we use gender and race disaggregated data to inform more equitable policymaking. Gender equity is a $301 billion opportunity in the state of California. To rebuild and reimagine California's economy, leaders must account for these intersectional gender differences. Failure to do so is a fiduciary irresponsibility at its finest. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Katka. That was really helpful perspective. I will now open it up to questions from my commissioner colleagues. And one thing I'll add as a point of privilege, if you could share, you know, what keeps you hopeful in all of this? I feel like we've heard a little bit of doom and gloom, but like, you know, I'll kick it off with just what keeps you hopeful in this work. It's critically important. And then my colleagues can jump in with any questions after that.
Well, you know, I didn't share this, which I typically do share. I'll share two quick, very quick things that keep me hopeful. One, I mentioned that my father was Hungarian. I am the daughter and sister of refugees. Over sixty-five years ago, my father made the difficult decision to escape from Hungary. His decision was difficult, not only because he would be risking his life, but also the lives of his three daughters, my three older sisters, who were three, seven, and eight at the time. With the help of Hungarian Freedom Fighters, they actually walked across a minefield and crossed the border into Austria and arrived to a refugee camp. Less than two months into their stay in the refugee camp, President Eisenhower sent Air Force One to bring twenty-one Hungarian refugees to the United States on Christmas Day, 1956. And my father and sister, sisters, were part of the twenty-one Hungarian refugees on Air Force One. So if you think about it, as a parent, I wonder what it felt like for my father to go from running for his life to watching his daughters climb the stairs of Air Force One to freedom. That is what keeps me hopeful. That's one of the things that keeps me hopeful. If that is possible, then it is possible to close the gender equity gap in the United States and in the state of California. The other piece is, as a gender economist, if we look at data differently and apply the intersectional gender equity lens, we see different problems and we see new narratives. And if we see different problems and if we see new narratives, we see different solutions. And if we see different solutions, then we can actually close the gap.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody unmuting, so I'm gonna keep the party going unless other folks have questions. Thank you so much for being here, Katka, and sharing that wisdom with us. It's always helpful to have that perspective. And yeah. I am going to now, oh, I see Commissioner Proudfoot with a question really quickly. Can we have her unmuted and go ahead and answer her question?
Thank you, Katia, for that summary and report, and it's your work and your story is amazing. My question for you is, what has your research shown you in terms of Native American women? Do you have any data to share about Native American women? I do. I had to look it up. For Native women, we know that in the last year, and I'd have to get the specific number for you, I just don't know what it is offhand, that the pay gap has actually widened, and it's somewhere between nine and eleven cents in the last year that they've actually been set back. So in terms of the wage gap, which is made up of not only money coming into women's wallets, wallets, but money coming out of women's wallets, they actually have less money coming into their wallets.
Thank you.
Okay.
Katika, I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the commission and echo Lauren's sentiments. I know I'm getting a lot of messages from commissioners who want to see your testimony, like if we can get a copy of it, some of the stats are really powerful. That would be amazing. And I know, as we had shared with you before, we had the commissioner working on the statewide blueprint. We actually cite some of your work within it, talking about the economic impact, and so we would look forward to sharing that with you and invite you to sort of join us as champions on the work that we're doing to help push policy and resources to help women from that intersectional lens. So thank you, and if you'd be willing to share your written testimony, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And for those who may not know, I'm actually a native Californian. I was born and raised in Napa, California, and went to undergrad at the University of San Francisco. So California is the state where I grew up, so.
Awesome. We love to hear it. Well, thank you for your time. I'm gonna move us back to our first panelist, Katie Bach. I think you have joined us. So Katie Bach is a senior fellow with the Brookings Institute. Katie is an expert in job quality in low-wage work. She has a particular interest in the incentives and structures that lead companies to under-invest in workers. She has worked with dozens of companies ranging from Fortune 50s to startups to frontline workers. And most recently, Ms. Bach was a managing director of the Good Jobs Institute, a nonprofit founded by MIT Sloan Professor Zenep Tonn. There, she helped companies build systems to maximize the motivation, productivity, and contribution of employees in the ways that lead them to better business results. She is also a scholar from many, many organizations, from the Fort Fellowship, the McKinsey Scholar, a civil scholar. She has also a degree in global politics from the London School of Economics, where she was valedictorian of her class, and a BA in philosophy and economics from Oxford University. She lives in Virginia with her husband and dog, and we are incredibly, incredibly grateful to you for the time. So I am gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Katie Bach.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here. I will say, that's my Brookings bio, and Brookings does make you list like every accomplishment. Just so you guys know, I don't usually list like valedictorian of my master's program on my list, but you know, I was. They gave me a twenty-five pound gift certificate. So I'm actually here to talk about a subject that is a little bit tangential to my standard work, which is about low-wage work. And actually, I was pretty involved in the fight for the recent legislation that passed around fast food workers in California. But I recently got interested in the impact of long COVID on the labor market. So, as I'm sure you guys have heard, you know, for the past, let's call it year, there's been a lot of talk about a labor shortage. You know, we're facing a labor shortage. And no one really gets why. And, you know, we've heard different narratives, right? Like, no one wants to work because they're getting unemployment insurance, and then that proved not to be true. And then it's like, well, no one wants to work because everyone hates working, which, you know, who knows? But I believe that long COVID is actually playing a pretty significant role in some of the labor market dynamics we are seeing today. So I'm gonna quickly just walk through some high-level numbers on the scale of the problem. And then I'm gonna talk really briefly about why this matters for women and what this looks like in California. So today, there are about sixteen point three million working-age Americans who have long COVID. And have long COVID, that's a pretty broad range, right? This could be anyone who, you know, for three months hasn't recovered a sense of smell. It could also be someone who literally cannot get out of their bed. And one theme of my work is that we really need better data collection on this. But anyway, we know we've got about sixteen million working-age Americans who have long COVID. Of those, my analysis suggests that somewhere between two and four million are out of work due to long COVID. Again, we really need better data. That's a very big range. But, but, but that's kind of, I think, a realistic estimate. And to give you guys a sense, I mean, you know, journalists keep asking me, okay, but how big is that? And I keep struggling to explain how unbelievably, like shockingly enormous that number or that range is. I mean, we're talking about, even to take the lowest edge of my range, right? Say we're a two million people out of work. That's about a hundred billion, billion with a B, dollars a year in just lost wages. Okay, if we're kind of at the, at the middle or the high end of my range, we are talking about an economic loss just of wages that is about a percentage point of GDP, like entire US GDP. So this is a huge problem, and the more people get infected, the worse this is gonna get, unless, unless people start recovering, right? So when I think about why this impacts women in particular, it's a couple different things. So number one, women get long COVID at about twice the rate of men. At least that's what the latest data are telling us. Number two, I think, as we know, and this is, this is not my field, so now I'm speaking as a woman, not a scholar, but the burdens of home, of caretaking, of taking care of the home do tend to fall disproportionately on women. Which means that when there is a sick family member, like a sick child or a sick parent, women do end up disproportionately being the caretakers. And so you've got women getting sort of doubly hit right now, where you've got them, they're getting long COVID more frequently than men. And they are probably having to step into that unpaid caregiver role more and more frequently. And just a quick note on what this looks like in California. So the latest data suggests that about eight percent of the working-age population has long COVID. In California, the number is eight point seven. So, you know, in line with, with national experience, but that zero point seven percentage points, when you're talking about millions of people, is actually significant. So that suggests California is in the, you know, higher part of this, of this, like, long COVID burden. So as we think about, okay, well, I mean, this is awful, clearly. So what do we need to do about it? I think it's a few things. Number one, we need better access to treatment. And part of that is about research, because we need clinical trials to understand what is going to help people. But two, it's about physicians being available to treat these patients. Right now, there aren't very many physicians who, I don't want to say specialized, but have significant experience with long COVID. Some of those physicians don't take insurance. There might be a year-long waiting list or more. And so people are really struggling to get care that might help them, if not fully recover, at least make gains. Number two, paid sick leave is critical. Because when people go to work sick, they spread COVID. Number three, long COVID is an ADA-protected and Americans with Disability Act-protected disability, and the government's been really good about clarifying that point. Where I think there is still a gap is patients don't always know that this is a protected condition. So they don't always know to ask their employer for an accommodation. And I think a lot of employers, and I speak now as a, you know, as a company executive, I think a lot of employers don't realize that this is a protected condition, that they actually have to offer an accommodation. I think employers also don't necessarily know how to accommodate it. You know, it's a tricky, it's a complex illness, and it's new. And so we don't have a lot of great guidance for employers, and that's a really critical next step. And then finally, you know, there are people where it doesn't really matter what accommodations they're offered, they're not gonna be able to work. And that might be because they are so sick. It might be because they work in a field that's just really hard to accommodate, like, you know, a field where women are disproportionately represented, nursing home aides. Nursing aides that work in, you know, nursing homes and assisted care facilities. It's a very physically demanding job. It has to be done in person. You work a set schedule. I mean, that's really hard to accommodate if someone is very sick. So for those people, we really need them to have access to a safety net. And in the first place, that probably means good social security disability. But of course, there are other aspects of safety net as well. And then, you know, the last point I would make is we do still have a big gap in data collection around this. So, you know, we now have an estimate for me that this is about two to four million people out of work. It would be nice to have more confirmation of that. And we're lacking data on the other impacts, right? So we have no data on what is the burden of people, on people who are now taking care of sick family members. We don't have a lot of data, for example, on women's lived experience with this, on whether it's easier for men or women to access care, because doctors often don't believe women when they come in and they have a bunch of unspecified symptoms, like, well, I'm, you know, fatigued, and I just don't feel well. It's like, okay, but you're probably just tired. And so anyway, there is still this kind of massive data gap. And as we see long COVID numbers increase, assuming that we do, I think it's gonna be increasingly important to fill it. So let me stop there and take any questions that anyone has.
I'll actually, is that okay, Chair God, if I? Katie, rather disappointing and dismal, but I really appreciate your report. I completely understand that there's obviously a need for more data. What recommendations do you have to even start closing that gap? What could we be doing? What could we be supporting to make that happen?
So at the national level, we need to add long COVID questions to the current population survey. It is, it is the kind of definitive source of labor market data. On the state level, and this is, I want to be very careful to stay in my lane. I know nothing about California-specific data collection. But states could be doing a lot to collect this information, right? And the trick is that you want longitudinal surveys. So you want surveys that track people over time. And actually, a really great model is the UK's Office of National Statistics. So what they do that's really smart is they don't just ask, do you have long COVID? And critically, you would never want to ask the question, do you have long COVID? Because some people wouldn't, they might not have heard of long COVID. Instead, it's about, do you have symptoms that you didn't have before you got COVID? And have they lasted at least three months? And, you know, you can, you can give some examples and list, list the kind of really common long COVID symptoms, you know, for example, this, this, this. But then the really key follow-up is, how much is this impacting your life? And in the UK, they say, like, is this limiting your daily activities? Is it limiting them a lot? In the US, we don't have anything like that. I would personally want to add questions, like, is there anyone in your family? Um, I would personally want to add questions, like, is there anyone in your family who has this? Like, have you had to cut down on work to care for them? Um, and and then questions on income impact.
I have one more follow up, sorry.
Yeah, no, please.
Is there a correlation between um individuals who've been vaccinated, boosted, and have, you know, um, did not have not gotten long COVID?
Yeah, so put this in the bucket of things we're still not sure of. I have seen estimates ranging from fifteen to fifty five zero percent in terms of how much vaccines reduce your long COVID risk. And and this is, I should say, this is separate from reducing your infection risk. If you don't get infected, you're good. But assuming you get infected, the the study that I found most convincing, um, just based on the methodology, was that fifteen percent. But but I do know others have cited, you know, anywhere up to fifty percent.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? If you identify by the raise your hand reaction, that'd be easier for me to to see you. But maybe Lisa, you came off mute. Do you have a question?
Yeah, um, so I I have a question about two pieces of this and and hoping that you have a bit of an answer. But um, and that it's not going to be surprising. But I've heard um, two things recently about people have long COVID from um, kind of the medical community, I'm hearing about this. And um, well, they're kind of related, I'll put them all together. So evidently, many um, medical, whatever, providers um, have been recently limiting the number of visits that are allowable. Uh, you do know about this, which just freaked me out. Um, I was told they're limiting them to three visits once they're a as of a certain point, saying that, A, there might not be anything I can do for them, which seems weird, but more importantly, saying that it's a mental health thing at a certain point. And um, yeah, does this sound familiar, Katie?
Yeah.
And I I feel like it's a dirty little secret that I'm voicing here, but but I was, I I I I I literally like, I I, you know, I couldn't catch my breath after I heard it. I I just couldn't believe it. Um, but but that the numbers are going down and that after a period of time, it becomes um, yeah, not some, anyway, you know, you know about it, obviously. So like, what is this around the country? Is this is this a trend? What's the deal?
So this is where actually we do have some pretty good historical comparisons. This is not the first post-infectious illness that the US has ever faced. It's the first, it's the first one of this scale. I mean, let's take out polio. Um, but, you know, post-viral conditions and kind of colloquially called chronic fatigue syndrome, which is a terrible name, more formally MECSF. Um, for decades, these patients have been anywhere from ignored to ridiculed. And again, this is, these chronic complex illnesses disproportionately impact women. I I think it's probably not a stretch of the imagination to believe that that is part of why they are consistently ignored. Um, so, you know, and I I speak to a lot of long COVID patients, obviously, because of this research. And yes, I I hear that story a lot. The, you know, my PCP won't see me anymore for this. Um, I was told just like, get on an antidepressant. I will say, when you compare the credulity around long COVID to previous illnesses, it is better. More doctors believe these patients and more people kind of take it seriously. That's a shockingly low bar, though. Um, the other, so I, everything you say, I completely believe. The other thing to bear in mind is, you know, as a doctor, let's say you do believe them. Let's say you're PCP, right? You you completely believe something is happening. It's a really tough situation to be in. And this is where investment in research to clinical trials is so critical, because you might just not know what to do for these patients. And there are things you can do for most of them, but it usually takes, I mean, the specialists who focus on these chronic complex conditions, your intro appointment is usually like ninety minutes, right? Um, no insurance company is covering that. And so doctors are in this kind of, I mean, some of them, frankly, I I think it is horrifying and like shameful that they are just choosing not to believe patients' lived experience. But I think there are a lot of others who do and genuinely don't know what they can do about it.
And and just, do you have statistics on the long COVID patients, like the long, long COVID, I guess you call them? What the women versus men, what what's that disparity? Is it, is it like double or do we know yet?
We don't know yet. Um, you know, like I said, the the rate, if you, the Household Pulse Survey, which is, which is our best national data source now, you see about twice the rate, women versus men. For related, and I am not a scientist or even close, but for comparable conditions like MECSF, um, like, you know, some, there's some aspect of autoimmunity in some cases, we know that it's like sixty to eighty percent women.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions in the queue. Please raise your hand, commissioners. Okay, thank you so much, Katie. That was really, really important uh, information and really helps us put into perspective the new and um, challenges that women and girls face. And we look forward to continuing the conversation with you. I'm going to move us on to our short expert panel. Um, the goal here is, I think, each panelist has, give me one second, um, two to four minutes, and then we'll have some time for some questions. So I will pass it to Jane Thompson, Lead Industrial Hygienist with the National Nurses United. Uh, Jane is an industrial hygienist for the National Nurses United and California Nurses Association. She has extensive experience in workplace hazards and evaluating workplace health and safety and protections in healthcare settings. Her areas of focus include workplace violence, ergonomics, infectious disease. And she holds a master's degree in public health from the University of Illinois at Chicago and is a certified industrial hygiene um, by the Board of Global EHS credentialing. So thank you, Jane, for being here, and the floor is yours.
Thanks so much for having me. Um, for those of you who are not familiar, NNU, uh, National Nurses United is the largest labor union and professional association for registered nurses. And many of you may be familiar with the California Nurses Association, which is our largest state affiliate. Um, so I'll be talking specifically about the impact of long COVID on nurses. Um, so in the state of California, there are one point seven million healthcare workers employed, including nearly five hundred thousand registered nurses. And these nurses and other healthcare workers have borne the brunt of the impact of the COVID pandemic. They've faced high rates of infection because their employers did not protect them. And with those high rates of infection have come high rates of illness, time off work, um, isolation from their families, family members getting infected, family members dying, coworkers dying, and of course, um, the impacts of long COVID. And when it comes to long COVID, registered nurses and other healthcare workers are especially at risk. So not only do they work in occupations with some of the highest exposures to the virus, but they are also predominantly women. And research seems to be indicating, as you've heard already today, that women are at higher risk for developing long COVID after an infection. In the United States, there's no systemic tracking of long COVID. Um, but data from the United Kingdom, um, that you heard referenced by an expert earlier, reports that healthcare workers are more likely to report long COVID than many other occupations. Um, CNA, NNU has conducted um, surveys about um, working conditions and nurses' experiences during the pandemic. Uh, and we have found that um, among nurses in California, nearly thirty percent of RNs who contracted COVID experienced symptoms from zero to three months, um, lasting from zero to three months. Twenty-seven percent had symptoms lasting between three and nine months, and twenty percent had symptoms lasting nine months or longer. Um, and in these surveys, we also asked about um, different impacts of long COVID. And um, we saw nurses documenting multiple impacts, including um, having to miss work to recover or dropping their hours due to long COVID. Um, long COVID resulting in loss of physical endurance, um, resulting in an increased burden of workdays. Nursing is a very physically demanding job. It requires hours on your feet, uh, participating in patient lifts and repositioning. And this also results in a decreased ability to participate in or enjoy other activities outside of work um, because of time, uh, more time spent recovering from shifts work. Uh, nurses also reported experiencing retaliation and discipline for using sick time to deal with long COVID, or they reported having their jobs terminated while they were experiencing long-lasting long COVID symptoms. Um, nurses also reported being pressured to return to work before they were fully healed, and that resulted in delaying their recovery further. Um, nurses also reported medical debt when their workers complaints were denied if they were even able to file workers complaints. Um, and the impact of long COVID on the healthcare workforce and their patients will continue to be an ongoing issue. We're continuing to see widespread transmission in the majority of counties across the country and across California. Um, recent data indicates that the risk for adverse health outcomes following COVID infections increases with each additional reinfection, including for people who've been vaccinated and boosted. Um, and in our surveys, we um, still see a majority of nurses in California reporting concerns about being infected with COVID at work, um, due to a lack of protections and um, being concerned about their families becoming infected due to their employer's lack of protective measures. So without a systemic response to the pandemic, um, including optimal protections for nurses and other frontline workers and public health measures to prevent transmission from happening, uh, without those things, long COVID rates will continue to increase. Um, and long COVID will continue to and um, increase in the burden that it poses to many people, particularly um, to women and to healthcare workers. Thank you.
Jane, um, commissioners, if you have any questions, please feel free to raise your hands with the reaction for Jane. Okay, I saw Holly come off mute. Do you have a question?
Uh, I was just sort of curious um, how you are hearing or seeing um, that sort of retaliation factor um, when it comes to trying to take um, additional time off that isn't necessarily part of the existing COVID leave, since we know researchers, researchers showing so many people have already used up all of their paid time off if they have that and um, leave. So yeah, um, what, if you can speak to that anecdotally, I would love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I think there's a number of issues there, right? It was a limited amount of leave and it was really, really helpful for a lot of frontline workers. Um, but the the fact of the matter is that we're continuing to see more and more new variants emerge and spread, right? We saw the Omicron variants, and now we're seeing all the sub-variants of Omicron BA four and BA five. And we're learning that, um, even if you were infected with Alpha or Delta or BA one, Omicron BA one or BA two, you don't have very good protection against BA four or BA five, which are are dominant right now. Um, and so if you use all of your sick leave, your your COVID leave um, last year, when you became infected with Delta because your employer didn't give you the PPE you needed, but you're, you got it again this year because your employer doesn't require people to mask or, you know, whatever the changes are now, uh, you don't, you don't have that available to you anymore. And and um, we're seeing, um, there's, there's a bunch of issues with sick leave within the healthcare arena. But um, that's just to, you know, kind of speak broadly about all those issues.
No, I I appreciate that, because I think female-dominated industries like nurses, teachers, um, service sectors are obviously experiencing really high rates of reinfection um, with the same problems of not having access to these, um, you know, to the sick leave or the leave that they need. So I I appreciate that. I just want to say thank you for joining us today and taking time out of your day and your job to give your testimony.
Echo Holly's words. All right, I'm going to move us along to our next uh, expert. We have Desiree Nguyen, Orth Director of East Bay Community Law Center Consumer Justice Clinic. Desiree joined the Consumer Justice Clinic at the EBC LC in twenty twenty one. Prior to joining, Desiree ran the Consumer Advocacy Project at the Justice and Diversity Center of the Bar Association of San Francisco and private practice centered on working with women business owners in the creative industry. Desiree is passionate about consumer protections and strongly believes that financial education and literacy are the fundamental stepping stone to racial equity. As a first-generation API woman and newish mother of two, Desiree has a special propensity for fighting for women of color. Desiree has worked as the Director of the CJC um, and is largely focused on creating consumer protection policies that serve and dismantle um, outdated laws that provide systemic barriers to access for low-income, low-income, monolingual or unrepresented consumers. Desiree, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for having me today. Um, let me first start by talking a little about about East Bay Community Law Center where we are. Um, EBC LC is really focused on supporting women of color. That is our platform and that is our mission. That is the lens through which all of our work um, filters through to make sure that we're able to support women of color, for the very reason that we know women of color are the people who are supporting our most underserved populations. So when you lift women of color, you are lifting the community as a whole. Um, during the pandemic, we saw a lot of access to issue, access to justice issues that were just deepened. They were already existing, but they were made deeper by the pandemic and the lack of access to the internet, computers, um, Zoom, a lot of the ways that, you know, did not affect our opposing councils or the plaintiffs in these debt collection lawsuits really deeply impacted and still continues to impact our clients. Um, some of the other issues that we see is, I think, uh, Kotika and Katie mentioned, as well as the previous study that we discussed in the first hour, um, women are carrying the brunt of all of the household chores. So in addition to working full-time, women are supporting the household with um, homeschooling or providing the secondary care if a child's classroom is closed or they become exposed to COVID. Even in situations where the employer might be flexible about being able to work from home, it's not made, it has not made life any easier for our clients, our clients of women of color. For those who are not working in the service industry, who are able to work from home, we're communicating with them oftentimes on um, debt of another family member. So they're working on an issue for someone else because they have the ability to do that as they're working from home. It's kind of the same idea of, well, why didn't you do the dishes since you work from home, you know? Um, and and we're seeing that a lot impact women. And that could be not just for their partner, but also for um, an older family member who might be the victim of scams and frauds and identity theft. We've seen issues with um, identity theft and scams really skyrocket during COVID. Those were already prevalent, but with with everything moving online, including EDD stimulus payments, um, we saw a lot more, higher frequency of scams and identity theft occur, including situations where a neighbor was able to take a person's social security number by just listening through the walls. Um, some of the issues that we're seeing right now with our clients are personal debt, uh, student loans. We've seen a lot of student loans lately. I think this goes back to the larger issue um, that we've seen before COVID, which was the rising cost of education, along with the messaging that you must, you know, get higher education in order to get a higher-paying job and thus make more money to earn for your family and have some kind of financial independence. We're seeing the fallout of that now. Um, our last, our most recent clinic, I believe, out of nine clients, seven of them were student loan-related issues. And they were all from young women who are underserved, um, first-generation um, clients. Uh, we've also seen a lot of issues more recently with identity theft and domestic violence um, and intimate partner abusive relationships. And the the interesting thing about this is that they're coming up in the form of renewals of judgment. So where one of our clients, you know, well, not just one, many of our clients have escaped abusive partners, they will get information about a past lawsuit that they had no idea happened um, and get served with a wage garnishment notice at their employer. And it'll usually be for a debt that a a partner took out in their name or a partner um, made them spend money and and take out a credit card in their name instead of the partner's name. Um, so in dealing with that, we've, we focused our policy efforts this year on judgment enforcement. What we'd like to see is terminating the renewals of judgments. Um, currently in California, a judgment is good for ten years and it's renewable for life if you renew it within ten years. So it's this infinite process that really works against the consumer, because any type of evidence that you might have had to prove that this wasn't yours or you were never served has disappeared by then. Um, we we recently have had a client come in who had their judgment renewed twice. So that means that the debt was incurred in nineteen ninety seven, about thirty years ago. Um, and that, as you can imagine, is impossible for us to to set aside. One interesting grant that came One interesting grant that came out of the pandemic for us was a very generous grant where we distribute funds for people in order to stay housed. The purpose of the money is for to help people stay housed who have no other options. So in a lawsuit, if we know that the client is likely to lose the lawsuit because maybe the witness will fly in, that's one of the things that we've seen is original predators are now able to have their witnesses appear in court over Zoom, whereas that would be an additional cost before. If we believe that they're going to lose in court, we will try to help them settle the debt out of our funds. And that will prevent the person from getting a judgment against them and hurt their credit report for for rental housing later on. I think I'm going to go ahead and stop there and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Desiree. Commissioners, please raise your hands and I will call on you. Quick question that I had, you mentioned the anti-personal violence and domestic violence being a huge barrier. What resources do you think are needed at a policy level to really tackle some of that? What I would call coercion, right? Like that's that really sets many folks up for a challenge as they're trying to rebuild their lives. And so is there anything that you, you know, top of your list on a policy perspective that would really help those folks impacted by that situation?
So there are a set of debt coercion bills that I believe are being run right now. And while those are really great for a lot of people who are using the family law system and they're able to get restraining orders and it's kind of part of the process that they intend to go through already. I think that's an amazing tool for those folks. That is not something that we would necessarily recommend to our clients who are oftentimes still in an abusive relationship because they're afraid to leave. Maybe they have children. It's it's just not feasible for many people in our community. So to ask them to go to family law court and get a restraining order in order to list this debt as coerced is not practical for us. What I'd like to see instead is something that is more simplified. Recently, there was a law that passed that enabled victims of identity theft to withhold the police report because we know that police reports are inequitably utilized. Okay. I'd like to see something like that for women who are survivors. Previous to the coerced debt bills, at least in San Francisco Superior where I used to practice, the courts were very consistent about how they were applying their standards. So if I had a client who was declaring under penalty of perjury that this was a coerced debt, the judges were very clear about believing that. In Alameda County, where I currently practice, there's you know, this is a larger court system. There's there are more courthouses. The outcomes are not as evenly applied. And I'd like to see some more consistency in the courts. And if that means like coming from a policy level like we were hoping with ending the renewals of judgment, that kind of takes out any of the discretionary parts of 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 the court and any kind of like unfair application.
Thank you, Desiree. All right. Thank you for being here. That's so important for us to keep in mind as we think about policy and what is helpful for folks, not just what's convenient. So we hope to continue the conversation with you as we look at solutions and make sure we're centering the folks that maybe not are not always talked about in those spaces. So thank you for that. All right, moving on to our next expert, we have Colette Moore. Colette Moore is Vice President and Program Manager at PCR Business Finance, previously known as Pacific Coast Regional Small Business Corporation in Los Angeles. The organization is celebrating 45 years this year. And Cola is the Director of the Small Business Development Center, C, sorry, SBDC, helping small businesses start, grow and successfully run their businesses. As a business owner herself who recently owned and operated staffing franchises, Pride Staff, for eight years, Colette developed and provided candidates to a broad base of businesses for administrative to light industrial jobs. In 2015 and in 2018, Pride Staff was named the best staffing agency and Colette's office was named top 100 minority owned businesses by the Los Angeles Business Journal and honored at the California Small Business Day in 2015. Prior to that, Colette was the Vice President of Marketing and Global Strategy and Business Development and Partnerships at Walt Disney Studios Home Entertainment, Brand Driving Branding, Partnership Synergy and launching new formal, excuse me, new formats, including Blu-ray. The floor is yours, Ms. Colette Moore. Thank you for being here. Oh, I don't think we can hear you. Or is it just me? No volume. Oh, let's see. I'm not able to adjust anything on this end, so I I I'm sorry to say I think it might be on her end. Okay, I see that she. Yes.
I was gonna say, maybe as Colette figures it out, he might be able to move on to our next speaker. We do have Joe Sandberg here if it doesn't get resolved.
Okay, Colette, can you hear us? Nope. We can't hear you. Okay. Yes, let's see if we can move on. We'll we'll circle back to Ms. Colette once we figure out what her tech issue is. Okay. So I'm going to move us around a little bit. We're gonna start that second panel. Second hearing that starts at one, I see Joe Sandberg from, he's the founder of the Golden State Opportunity. Joe is a progressive business leader and anti-poverty advocate. He is a steward of the movement to pass the Earned Income Tax Credit for low income families in California. He founded, wow, love this acronym, CAL EITC for me. One of the state's largest anti-poverty programs, which has put more than $10 billion back into the pockets of working families. He successfully led the charge to expand eligibility for program to low wage workers, young adults, seniors, and has previously been who had previously been excluded from the tax credit. The then California Governor Jerry Brown, top advisor Nancy McFadden called Joe, the spark behind the efforts the state's effort to execute the new program. So Joe, do you want to take it over? The floor is yours.
Well, thanks so much for having me. I'm really excited to be with you because the central impact of the work that we do in California to fight poverty is about putting more money in the pockets of women. The gender wage gap is most pernicious among low income women where it's a matter of whether you're able to provide two or three meals a day for your family, whether you can make your rent and make your car payments. So the stakes couldn't be higher. And as you all know, despite California's impression of being this progressive bastion, the facts on the ground are actually quite to the opposite. California has the highest poverty rate in the country. And what was remarkable about passing that earned income tax credit into law is that it was the first new anti-poverty program that California had passed in some 40 years. For the last year, I've been focused on a new policy frontier that also is addressing the gender wage gap. And that's raising California's minimum wage. You surely know that two out of three minimum wage workers in California are women and disproportionately people of color. Yet California's minimum wage, well, 10 years ago ahead of the curve, now lags. And there's no better way of describing that than comparing Florida, which has a $15 minimum wage and California, which has a $15 minimum wage. We know California's cost of living is exorbitantly higher. So over the last year, I've been organizing with a great team a ballot proposition to raise California's minimum wage to $18, called the Living Wage Act. We collected over 1 million signatures and we constitutionally qualified that proposition for the 2024 ballot. You might have read in the media that we were trying to qualify it for the 2022 ballot and due to some, you know, honest mistakes by different state agencies, the signatures were validated a little bit late. But we are qualified for the 2024 ballot. And passing that Minimum Wage Act into law would raise wages for 5 million Californians by over $6,000 a year. So we're talking about $30 billion of annual economic impact, 20 billion of which would go into the pockets of California women. But we're not going to wait until 2024. We set out to put this on the 22 ballot and working people can't wait a couple of years. So in the coming spring, we're going to be working on legislative strategy to pass and increase minimum wage through the legislature, understanding that if the legislature doesn't act, this will be on the 24 ballot. And it will pass because 73% of California likely voters support raising California's minimum wage to $18. And we all know this is a blue state, but it's not 73% blue. So a majority of non-affiliated voters, non-party preferences support higher minimum wage of 18 bucks and almost 40% of Republicans support a higher minimum wage of 18 bucks. And and that's because I think this is an ethos that can transcend typical ideologies, which is if you work, you shouldn't be living in poverty. I know, no one should be living in poverty. But good luck to anyone who wants to argue that anyone who's working full time should be living in poverty. But the reality is there's three plus million women in California who are working full time and are living in poverty. And by raising the minimum wage to $18, you know, well, we won't cure poverty. $3 an extra pay an hour, $24 of extra pay a day, $6,240 of extra pay a year. That makes a big difference. That's going to be millions of families who have three instead of two meals a day and who are going to be more rent secure than on the edge of experiencing homelessness. You know, if I can just take a moment of personal privilege and share why it is so important to me. My mom raised me by herself and I saw firsthand what so many others have seen, which is how unfair our economy is, especially for women and especially for single moms like my mom. She worked as hard as anyone can work and we still lost our home to foreclosure. And I think that's always affected the way I've seen the world, which is a disbelief of this idea that we're told as kids that if we work hard and play by the rules, life works out. Because that that wasn't true for my mom and it's not true for millions of other women in California and tens of millions of women throughout the nation. So forgot to turn my computer phone off. The stakes couldn't be higher. And what's exciting about this is is we can win. And the worst case is we're going to pass this into law in 2022, in 2024, excuse me, and the best case, we'll pass this through the legislature next spring. So, you know, I don't need to repeat all the ways that you know firsthand that raising wages increases the power that women have. I saw through my my mom's own eyes that the assault on women's rights in our country starts with a system that subjugates women's economic power. And it's very hard to take rights away from people who have money. Still obviously done, but I think if you put more money in the pockets of women, then you are pushing back against the systematic assault on women's rights. Not to mention everyone does better when women have more spending power in our economy. So I really hope we'll be able to work together on this. It's going to be exciting. I hope we'd have it on the 22 ballot. But you know, you know what they say about if you plan, God laughs. So we're gonna make the best of it being on the 24 ballot and and hopefully passing it into law through the legislature in 2023.
Thank you, Joe. Any commissioners want to jump off mute or raise your hand for questions for Joe? I have one that's just gonna be out there for Joe. Why do you know how people say inflation's crazy right now? Like, why would we do this? Because, you know, we're already trying to buy, I don't know, milk is like $7. That's not true. Oh, but you get what I'm saying. What do you say to those folks that are just kind of like, I don't see how this is going to be helpful, given the state of the economy today?
I say it's exactly because inflation of things people have to buy is out of control that we need to raise people's wages. Inflation is not rising because working people are earning too much. Inflation is rising because corporate executives are enjoying record profit margins. You know, and I'm a business person by profession, so I'm a rookie to politics, but I I know a good amount of the business. And I hope that if you remember one thing I share, remember this. The idea that this battle of inflation today is caused by workers having too much purchasing power, it's just a lie. And here is the statistic that supports it's a lie. The last time we had serious inflation in the United States was in the late 70s, early 80s. And during that period of time, corporate profit margins were 60% less than they are today. So it cannot be that when you have record corporate profit margin, record profits going to company shareholders and executives, that the reason we have inflation is because workers have too much purchasing power. I think it's pretty logical to look at that picture and say it's because corporations are earning excessive margins. And then on top of that, we have the fact that there's all these supply constraints that came from turning the economy off and on due to COVID. So the only thing that's going to happen when we raise people's minimum wage is that millions of working people are going to be able to better afford buying food and paying for their rent. The way we fix inflation this time around is by taxing corporations and fixing some supply constraints. And what's interesting is that voters intuitively understand this. As inflation worsened, support for raising the minimum wage to $18 actually went up 10 percentage points. When we started polling on an $18 minimum wage in California last autumn, it had 63% support. And the polling we did about 30 days ago showed 73% support. And then when we double click and ask people specifically how inflation affects their views, it affects their view by making them more inclined to support a higher minimum wage.
Thank you, Joe. That was awesome. That's exactly what I needed to hear. Thank you for your time. We look forward to learning more as you might be the bright the bright spot in the doom and gloom that we're presenting today. So thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Lauren, I just want to say thank you, Joe, for coming and for personally being a champion on issues that really impact women. I know you have put your money where your mouth is and you're doing the work, whether it's EITC, living wage, all the above. So thank you for being the awesome champion and appreciate your expertise here.
Thank you very much. I'll see you soon.
All right, I'm gonna jump back to Ms. Colette Moore. Can you tell us if you can hear?
I'm hoping you can hear me. Can you hear me now? Perfect. All right, thank you. And that was the first. I apologize after many, many months of Zoom. So I thank you all today and thank you for having me. I wanted to talk a little bit about black women in business, but particularly black women. One of the things that we are seeing that, of course, women in business had pre-existing conditions already going into the pandemic. Black women particularly had issues, wealth gap issues, ownership of a business, but no funding or limited funding. And then also have challenge with growing revenue. So only 20% of the businesses are like above the poverty line. And so women are using these businesses to fund their households. So it's critically important that we take action to be able to assist. And so as the pandemic came through, women in general had a higher percentage of closure. So 26% of businesses for of women in general closed versus 20% of the general population when you include men. So women already had a burden there. And then one study shows that 80% of women tried to get loans or tried to get some type of business assistance, but the system just didn't really work for women of color. So 28% of women didn't know how to apply and 8% of those didn't trust the legitimacy of the programs that were out there. I ran against that with even some of my friends that I called like directly, you need to apply for this. I don't want you to. And they were like, is it real? You know, I didn't get it before. So there are these historical problems that people have had of applying and not getting that made them suspect for some of the programs that were available. So you've got this need for money, but now people are carrying a lot of debt. And so we're hearing that because women tend to self-finance and black women in particular tend to self-finance. The debt has grown instead of declined during the pandemic. And so you've got everything from lease debt. So folks, you know, their offices were closed, still had to pay lease. They also have unsold inventory, then changing behavior, people, especially in a couple of areas, restaurant and then also retailer. And so we're even asked with our cohort is they're asking, how can I get a business loan without personal credit? It's impossible. And I've been working with all of the people I know to figure that out. Very few people want to lend money to people that have debt. And so it's really something that is cutting people back and hurting people. Then the other one is just businesses are not fully recovered. And one of the other speakers shared about industries, certain industries, whether it's service or restaurants, certain industries just are not recovering at the fastest rate. And that's where you have people of color that have these types of businesses. And there's a high proportion of women owned businesses in there, not just not just women of color. And so you've seen, and we've talked to some of our clients, retail particularly, and some of the restaurants, they've cut their hours or cut their days back so that they, because they can't find staff, they can't raise their rate wages necessarily. And so they've cut back their days of And so they've cut back their days of operation, which of course then cuts back their revenue and particularly potentially their profit as well. Um, and then, you know, we're seeing service cuts as well. So the program that was funded by um, the California Commission that we've been operating with our grant is the Self Program, which is a Sister Entrepreneur Loan Fund Program. And that money in coordination with US Bank helped to sponsor a group of women, our first inaugural cohort with not just technical assistance, which we provide through our SBDC as well, but also a grant. And the grants are critical at this time because it is difficult because of the high debt load, it's very difficult to get another loan and people are hesitant to do that and and will unlikely um, be successful doing that because of the debt burdens that they are currently carrying. Um. So we covered everything from planning, strategy, marketing with a key focus on profit projections because we have found during the pandemic, a huge gap in financial literacy. So financial literacy just is people are not prepared. Um, so profitability has been a key focus because without that, the organization cannot live. You cannot sustain yourself, nor do you have money to take back to your household. And so with just a couple of quotes I wanted to share. Um, one of our clients thanked us for creating an excellent program. So even after being in business for eight years, learned a great deal from our presentations. And with so many black female business owners gave me hope for the future of our economic power. And I think that that's what women are looking for. Where's that economic power, whether it's wages um, or not. And then also understanding that women don't pay themselves in general. And so even when they own their own businesses, they pay themselves less than men. And so um, we know that that's a problem going on. And then one of the other uh, comments was my biggest challenge was staying on top of my P and L statements and balance sheets. Now I'm no longer intimidated by it and actually enjoy doing it every day. Thank you. And that was from one of our client shares. So our clients are growing and I think that's the high note uh, Lauren here is that yes, there are challenges that were exacerbated during um, the pandemic for our clients, uh, women in general, and then also particularly black women. But we see that women are willing to grow, they're willing to learn and apply and to improve their status with that knowledge and also with the grants that um, they will be receiving next week for our first cohort. So we're super excited about that. And so um, I think for us, we would be looking for long term commitment. You know, how do we support women in business? How do we keep them going? How do we provide more grant money, not loan money, particularly during this period when loans are likely going to be unavailable and um, most of our the clients in this program wouldn't be ready or interested in a loan for at least a year, even though we have loan money available to provide for the women that came out of this program. And so um, that's because of the debt burdens. And so I think a long term program and making sure that there are grants available for women in business is going to be critical. And then particularly for women of color. So thank you all. Questions?
Thank you, Colette. That's really inspiring. Um, talk about, you know, putting your money where your mouth is. We put a direct investment into this program and now we're helping black women, um, small businesses and communities. So that is really, I don't know, I'm like top of my bright spots as we continue to go, but thank you for sharing that. Uh, commissioners, anybody have questions for Colette? Okay.
I wanna, sorry, I keep adding comments because I'm so inspired by all of the panelists, but I just want to say, Colette, thank you for having the commission. I know I joined one of your kickoffs um, with one of the the grantees that um, they were doing a training and I just have to find it so inspiring to see that you're organizing a group of women who are learning about how do you position yourself for a business loan? What what kind of questions are you going to get? How does this community come together to help each other to be successful as small business entrepreneurs? So um, keep up the great work and I'm so excited to see um, the the grant program in action. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, going back to our second hearing session. Um, I'm going to introduce Ms. Samantha Gordon from Tech Equity. She is the Chief Program Officer at Tech Equity Collaborative. Samantha is an experienced leader in the space of workers' rights and social justice. She served for over twelve years with the Two Million Member Service Employees International Union, SEIU, most recently as the Division Executive Director for SEIU Local One Thousand, which represents ninety six thousand, excuse me, yeah, ninety six thousand state workers across California. In her time at SEIU, she focused on strengthening member engagement and leadership development programs across the country. Samantha trained and developed the SEIU Local Union Chapters on political education and small donor fundraising, helping SEIU become one of the most largest political action committees in the US prior to Citizens United. In addition, she played leadership roles for SEIU in two thousand eight and two thousand twelve presidential elections in Arizona and Florida. And respectively Samantha moved from SEIU's national organizations to its largest public sector, Local Union Chapter, SEIU Local One Hundred. She is a change maker and I am really excited to hear from her. Samantha Gordon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Lauren, and thank you all for having me today. I'm really excited to talk to you. Um, as Lauren mentioned, I have a background in workers' rights and the labor movement and um, joined Tech Equity Collaborative in twenty twenty and have been helping to build out um, really a flagship initiative for the organization, looking at contract workers and contract worker disparities. Um, so I think uh, there's a PowerPoint that's going to be shared, so I want to give that a sec to come up and I can start walking us through. Wonderful. Um, great. Yeah, so Contract Worker Disparity Project, you can go ahead and go to the next screen. Um, this is part of the work that we do at Tech Equity Collaborative. Um, we are a young nonprofit. We're about five and a half years old. So just to give everyone a sense of who we are and what we do, we really work on trying to build uh, a world where everyone gets to benefit from the growth of the tech economy. And we specifically engage tech workers and tech companies who are willing in building a more equitable economy. The two main issues we work on are housing and workforce and labor, and we do that through a set of values and in particular, an anti racist lens. And that's how we come to uh, this project I'm going to talk to you about, which is our Contract Worker Disparity Project. So you can hit next. So the Contract Worker Disparity Project is a worker centered research project that we started in Tech Equity um, at the end of twenty twenty, really investigating within the tech industry, um, how, you know, there's a two tiered workforce, an entire class of tech workers who have been locked out of the prosperity of the tech industry. Um, and really trying to take a look at things we were hearing anecdotally and figure out, is that bearing out in the research? Um, so contractors who are hired often through contracting or staffing agencies doing the same work as their directly employed counterparts while making less money, receiving fewer benefits and experiencing career immobility. So um, I know the commission had hoped that I would talk today about how this kind of ladders up to the racial and gender wage gap that we see in California. Um, and there's a really direct tie. So the part of this that I'm really going to focus in on today is on staffing agencies and the role they've played in exacerbating that um, gender and racial wage gap. Next. So just the basics, what is a staffing agency? So this is commonly referred to as a contracting agency, a vendor, a temp firm. Sometimes people use a payroll agency or a P O. In particular, if you're small and maybe you need to hire folks in another state and you don't have the resources to do benefits and taxes in another state, that's why people use a P O sometimes. Um, but I think a clean way to think about this is I'm Google and I hire um, a company named Adecco and they provide me um, labor workers to help uh, with a variety of, you know, tasks needed at the company. So we've been looking at this as applies to the stack or to the tech industry, but this is not a model that is unique to the tech industry. It exists in industries all over California, all over the country, and it is not a new model. Next. So these agencies work, like I said, there's really kind of three main buckets in the way we think about them. One is staffing where a company will provide a specific set of workers for a project or a division or a type of work. Second is payroll. Um, so that's where they need someone to serve as the employer of record. So, you know, I got hired by um, you know, payroll agency LTD, but I really work for Google and Google manages my day to day. Um. Payroll Agency LTD is just my employer on paper. And then third is a service provider, sometimes called a vendor. So that's where you might be seeing like Sedexo or ABM that provides janitorial services on a campus or cafeteria. So they will provide the workforce, but they will also manage the workforce and run the day to day. Next. Um, so why do they exist? And so there's a variety of answers to this, but the one we usually explain to people is where they come out of. So this practice of shifting portions of the labor force from direct employment to the payrolls of contracting agencies really um, exploded after World War Two. So the staffing agency or the staffing industry built itself as being able to fulfill, you know, flexible temporary roles with, you know, I use heavy quotations here, ideal employees without asking companies to make long term commitments to an individual worker or family sustaining income, benefits, retirement. Go ahead, next. So this um, famously became known as the Kelly Girl. Um, so Kelly Services was one of the um, very well known uh, staffing agencies, temp agencies that got really big after World War Two. So they really marketed themselves as, you know, providing uh, temp workers who are housewives with extra time on their hands. And they would place white uh, women, in particular, white women into white collar work that was traditionally reserved for white men. And then, you know, I think on the positive side, sometimes people would say, well, women were likely to face discrimination. And so they use this to try and get a foothold into economic security and access to the workforce. But I will direct you to the next slide so we can see how that worked out. So this is where the marketing started to go. So just because the print is small, I've highlighted it here, began to be marketed in the seventies as never takes a vacation or holiday, never asks for a raise, never costs you a dime on slack time, never has a cold, never costs you for unemployment taxes, fringe benefits. And the scariest one to me is never fails to please, right? Um, so this was the marketing that became prevalent in the temp industry and we've seen manifestations of this, not just for women, but for people of color, for folks that come from vulnerable communities in the workforce, um, where these jobs are um, often even marketed to be inherently exploitive. And in this case, I would say, you know, borderline violent for women. Next. So what does it look like today? Um, in twenty twenty, the staffing industry reported a hundred and forty billion dollars in revenue, which is a hundred and seventy five percent increase over the past two decades. And in twenty twenty one, um, here in California, their revenue was thirty five billion alone, just in the state with an estimated one point nine million temporary workers. We use that um, quotations there as well because seventy five percent of um, temp workers are employed full time, often for a long term assignment. So it's a misnomer to say that they're temps, they're often just a secondary workforce at a lot of companies. There was um, reporting happening in San Francisco that estimated there were a thousand staffing agencies in San Francisco in the city alone. Um, and the staffing industry, the American Staffing Association believes they're exempt from EO one reporting requirements. Um, that that we hear that the E O C might not agree with them on that, but um, which means that they're also evading um, reporting, which would look at discrimination and in hiring um, as it relates to gender and race. Next. So another uh, sort of important thing to emphasize here from, you know, the origins of Kelly Girl in the fifties to the Never Never Girl in the seventies, um, our partners at Temp Worker Justice and a series of other organizations examined the staffing agency practices in Illinois and they did match pair testing um, on sixty staffing agencies there and revealed that sixty three percent of them engaged in discrimination and the discrimination was most egregious against black applicants. At the ten percent of agencies where black applicants were actually given preference, it was given preference over Latinx workers. They were still offered less desirable jobs. And about fifteen percent of the agencies were documented um, as engaging in occupational segregation in terms of placing Latinx and black workers in different jobs based on their race. Next. And then our research at Tech Equity, which really looked at this through the tech industry, found similar patterns. Um, so this is just a top lines of it. And for anyone that's interested, I can send you the report that I just went over with match pair testing and also our report is available publicly as well. Um, but contract workers generally, this changes based on um, race, gender and type of job, but make seventy five cents of a dollar for what direct employees make when doing the same job. Next. They um, famously do not get the same level of benefits that workers in the tech industry get. So, you know, you can see here sort of the rundown. Well, a hundred percent of directly employed workers at these companies receive paid time off, vacation, basic health insurance. Those numbers dwindled significantly when it looks at the contract workforce. And we did a mix of first person interviews as well as a um, a study, a quantitative study, which is the largest of its kind in the tech industry of this workforce and found that, you know, for a lot of workers, um, the ones that we interviewed, many people reported having no paid time off. Next. And then the racial gap. So um, you know, for everyone, uh, black direct employee, there was one point four more black contract workers, excuse me. And the numbers increase when you look at Latinx workers and at native contract workers. Um, and while, you know, one versus one point four might not seem stark at this first slide, when you expand that out to hundreds of thousands of workers, that's an extreme um, racial gap. And then when you pair that with the fact that they're often making, you know, thirty percent less and, you know, even higher percentages less. Um, that becomes extreme in terms of the racial income gap. Next. And the gender gap. So direct employees in this is looking at the tech industry is male dominated. Um, contract workers, uh, there are more women than there are directly employed women. Um, our research also captured non binary and gender expansive. The E O C doesn't currently capture this, although um, the California Civil Rights Agency is starting to capture that data. So we will have comparison soon. Next. And then I just also wanted to include uh, another partner of ours, um, HR and A advisors looked at the racial income gap in the tech industry in New York City. Um, and I think it's illustrative for what we're seeing happen in the tech industry um, because of persistent underrepresentation in the workforce. They estimate in New York City alone, um, tech contributed forty six billion dollars to the racial income gap. So really, it's important that we um, really think about the contract workers, not just as a two tiered workforce, but also how segregating uh, you know, multiracial populations of workers, multi gender populations of workers into lower paid roles furthers the racial and gender income gap. Next. So at Tech Equity, we have proposed a set of public policy changes to get at some of these issues, including equal pay for equal work, really looking at if a contractor is doing the exact same job as a direct employee for the exact same company. Um, it, we should maybe think about why our laws say that those folks should be paid different and how that's working in practice. Second is ensuring safe and secure employment. Um, a lot of temp workers or contract workers, especially in lower wage jobs, work under very unsafe conditions. And so there's a lot of work we could do there in terms of public policy. And then third is bringing transparency transparency to the contract workforce. So like I mentioned, the staffing industry um, didn't see themselves as included in the E O C reporting, EO one reporting. They also didn't see themselves included in the pay data reporting in California. So um, that was a major uh, goal of ours uh, with the Pay Transparency for Pay Equity Act, S B eleven sixty two, which just passed yesterday. Next. And then finally, um, we also issued a set of corporate practice changes. So we put together responsible contracting standards. So if any of you are from or working with companies who are like, wow, I didn't know this was happening. I didn't know how this was contributing to the racial and gender wage gap. I want to fix it. We've put together a really comprehensive set of corporate practices that companies could voluntarily change tomorrow for their workforce and for the contractors at their companies. And we believe that that would have a sizable impact in addition to public policy and would reduce liability and risk for those companies. Um, so I will stop there. I'm happy to answer questions and thank you all again for uh, letting us have some space to talk about this issue, which we think is really critical.
Thank you, Samantha. Um, commissioners, either unmute yourselves or raise your hands for questions. I will take a point of privilege, Samantha, to kind of ask you this question.
Yeah.
I'm really excited about S B eleven sixty two. Can you talk to us more about sort of what do you think that will do and make significant change for uh, women and girls in California? And then what work do you think still needs to be done sort of in that space?
Yeah, well, the uh, there were three provisions of S B eleven sixty two, which I know you know, Lauren, and and some of the folks on the call know, but um, the first was really to bring transparency to the pay data reporting. So California Civil Rights Agency collects pay broken down by job type, by race, gender and ethnicity. So California Civil Rights Agency collects pay broken down by job type, by race, gender and ethnicity. And SB 1162 originally would have made those reports public by company. That was amended in the final appropriations review in the assembly. But the remaining two provisions were the inclusion of contractors into that pay data reporting, which to your question, Lauren, would allow the Civil Rights Agency, when they put out reports on what's happening industry-wide and what's happening in the workforce, they're going to be able to show now, here's what it looks like for direct employees in this industry and here's what it looks like for contractors by pay, by race, by gender. And I think that that's a really important tool for policymakers and for activists and advocates to understand these distinctions and be able to think about, okay, now we have the data. So what are we going to do differently to protect women in these positions, right? How are we going to think about our equal pay laws? And if they're set up for success, if companies are shifting work. So I think that's one big component. And then the other component, which is huge for women and girls, is that every private employer with 15 or more employees now has to include salary in the job description, which we know that when companies don't do that, it sets women and people of color back significantly and often means we're entering to roles where we're being underpaid from the beginning. So this sort of takes one of the biggest barriers out of that process by saying, here's how, here's the band for this role. And women and people of color can come in and advocate for themselves within that band. So that's huge. And part of the reason I brought up the first part that got taken out is that's work still we need to do. We need that information by company. We know we have a gender and racial income gap, wage gap, wealth gap in the state. We know it is severe, that is pernicious. And that if we don't have the data by company, we can't actually tackle it, right? And we're putting a lot of responsibility on one agency to feather out every single problem versus giving the public, workers and all of us, the tools we need to be able to say like, oh, this isn't going well. Have they thought about this? How are we working with them to make this better? So that's, that's one big piece, just on the data side that needs to get done for sure.
Awesome. Samantha, I'm going to ask one more question, and I'm also going to ask the same question to our next panelists, Jessica Stender. But what do you say to folks who feel like releasing that data will make companies look bad, right? Because nobody really wants to look bad, but y'all agree that the problem needs to be fixed. So how do we meet the middle on that? If you don't have an answer, that's totally fine too. I just, I'm curious about folks that have that notion and what you might say to them.
Yeah, I, I would be curious, Jess's answer. She had a great quote at the end of one of the articles where it's, this is might be too extreme, but sort of saying, you know, if, if you're worried about being shamed, maybe make sure there's nothing to be ashamed of. But that's the, that's the quippy answer I would give. But the real answer is that, you know, I think a lot of companies are working really hard to make strides on this and that that data, you know, while it might not be that the company is doing anything illegal, it also incentivizes the company to really look at these patterns, right? Of what we've seen in tech is occupational segregation and be able to have the space to fix them internally before they go public. I think that that's something that we know will happen, right? We've seen that in EU countries. It's a benefit, not just for pay transparency and pay equity. It's also a benefit for the company because it, it requires them to do that. And I also think that, you know, none of us are dumb, right? We can see it's happening. So the idea that, you know, like that it's suddenly, if we release this data, some newfound, you know, data point's going to come out that illuminates the whole thing, we can see it, right? We want to actually partner with companies. We want to figure out how to make it better. So it's not a perfect answer, but I, I think it's something that they're never going to like the answer to. And the truth is that, you know, their hurt feelings are less important than women and people of color getting what they deserve economically.
Thanks, Samantha. I appreciate that and appreciate your time and thank you so much for all your work that you're doing. We will continue to work with you and be a force for good for whatever we can do to be helpful. So thank you and
Thank you all.
To transition to our last speaker, who is a friend of this commission. I feel like we have her on something literally every year, but it's because she's fabulous, amazing. So I am going to introduce Ms. Jessica Stender from Equal Rights Advocates. She is a key advisor to elected leadership and ultimately directs three major programs. One in union organizing, politics and communications. Jessica Stender is the Senior Counsel at the Workplace Justice and Public Policy Equal Rights Advocate. She's a policy director and deputy legal director, where she leads policy advocacy that focuses on pay equity, sexual harassment, pregnancy discrimination and education and civil rights. She also represents workers in employment discrimination cases. Jessica is co-chair of Stronger California Advocates Network, a statewide network of organization advocacy, coalitions promoting policy reform to improve economic security for women and families. She is the co-chair of the Women's Rights Committee of the American Bar Association Civil Rights and Social Justice Section and the Policy Committee for the National Task Force of Tradeswomen Issues. She also serves on the Board of Governors for California Women Lawyers. Jessica regularly speaks to people like us. She's been named one of the top labor employee, labor and employment lawyers in California by the Daily Journal. And she is all around amazing. So I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Jessica Stender. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren. And hi, everyone. It's really great to be with you today. As you heard, my name is Jessica, my pronouns are she/her. And I am going to talk some about kind of the evolution of California law in the equal pay realm and a bit about, more generally about the pay gap, then we've been talking about. So Danny or Donnie, if you don't mind bringing up the PowerPoint, perfect, thank you. Okay, we don't need all that. Thank you. So we always, and I know, you know, you all are well, well-seeped in this, in this knowledge, but we always, whenever I do a discussion about equal pay issues, always like to just kind of ground us in the numbers of what we're talking about here. And so I know many of you know it, but just as a reminder, we still, despite, you know, very significant progress in California, which I'll talk about, you know, still have a very significant wage gap, you know, at the federal level nationally, but also here in California. So these numbers are actually federal nationwide. We have California-specific data I can send you as well. But for Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander women, the overall wage gap is still 75 cents to the dollar. So that's as compared to non-Hispanic white counterparts. Women overall are still at 82 cents. Black women, 58 cents to the dollar. Native women, 50, and then Latinas, 49. So they're now below 50 cents. I note here with an asterisk, something that in prior years, the kind of broader equal pay community had used the data, US Census Bureau data for workers who work full-time year-round. But we this year used both data for full-time year-round workers, but also part-time workers to ensure, make sure we're being inclusive of all workers, particularly because women of color makeup, you know, are more disproportionately represented in part-time worker, workforces. So these gaps are real. They of course take a major toll on women and the families they support. And I should just note with regard to the AANHPI group, that's AANHPI women overall. When you disaggregate the data and look at various ethnic subgroups within those communities, that's their wage gaps are often much larger. So groups like Cambodian women, Monge women, their wage gaps are much, much greater and actually closer to native women, black women's wage gaps. So that's just a note on that. So I can go to the next slide. Thanks. This 82 cents, and this is the kind of women overall, without taking into effect race or ethnicity. You know, we've discussed this before, I know, in various commission meetings, but just as a reminder here, and I won't go through each of these bullets, but we'll send this after. Here's what you could get if you, if women were not, were being paid equally to men. Here is all that we could, we could pay for. Much more rent, food, childcare, university tuition, et cetera. So I know that you all don't need to be convinced of this, but I do think it's an important reminder of this money could go to basic necessities in addition to being able to be put away to have for when, when women and their families need it during an emergency or for retirement, to pass on to their children, et cetera. Okay, go to the next slide. So before we get into just the California law and the developments that, thank you, because many of you all in the commission have helped to drive these developments, the, the kind of drivers of the wage gap, there are many, and this is not all of them, but some of the key drivers I've listed out here. And the reason I did was that it's helpful to, I think, understand why some of these policies and laws have been enacted, because they really do help to address some of these drivers and contributors. So there is both intentional discrimination, which I laugh, because whenever I talk about discrimination, I always am reminded of a quote from a lawyer. This was in the law, of course, where pay is an issue, including in other, other wage jobs, where a lawyer was asked about implicit bias. It was a black lawyer in his firm. And he said, or she was a woman, he, she said, you know, we don't even really worry too much about implicit bias because there's so much explicit bias. So I just remind everyone, I know we're all aware of it, that there's often just pretty explicit intentional discrimination. We see it a lot in the workers that contact us in low-wage jobs, really at all levels. There are though unconscious bias and stereotypes that can play into what an employer deems to be the appropriate work for a woman or a woman of color, person of color, the appropriate pay. So when you don't have standardized procedures, that can play into the jobs and pay that can contribute to the wage gap. Pay secrecy, it is very common across the country for employers to tell workers they can't talk about pay and have actual rules in place for that. Reliance on prior salary, and I'm sure many of your ears are perking up since we've addressed a lot of these, which I'll get to. Just lack of appropriate structures like pay leave and caregiving, a lack of access to appropriate childcare and affordable childcare. And then finally, occupational segregation, where women and people of color are so often concentrated in lower-paying industries as a whole, but also within companies, they're often concentrated in lower-paying jobs. Go to the next slide. I'm not going to go into this much. This is kind of a bit more in the weeds, but I just wanted to talk a little bit, mention briefly, I should say, kind of the overall pay gap, women versus men or women of color versus white men. And then pay equity and the overall pay gap, can, there are many different contributors that I just mentioned. And then the issue of pay equity, which is men and women performing the same or substantially similar work and being paid equally for that work. And then I talk a little bit more about the legal standards, but I won't get into all of that now. We can go to the next slide. Great. So, and actually, I think we can, this was just to give people a sense when we dive into the California law of the broader federal laws at play, but we can go on to the next slide to get to California. Okay, sorry, next slide. Great. So the first big exciting law that we passed in California was in 2015, the California Fair Pay Act, which amended the existing California Equal Pay Act. And it required, instead of just pay, equal pay for equal work, it expanded that, 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 that term to say substantially similar work. And that was important because some courts were throwing cases out, equal pay cases, when there was pretty minor differences between a man and a woman's job that really shouldn't, wouldn't, shouldn't justify a pay disparity. So this substantially similar language was important to show that it doesn't have to be exactly the same every day, but substantially equal work. Under our law, it's both sex and race and ethnicity, not just sex, like at the federal level. I just talked about substantially similar work, and that's looked at when, as kind of a composite of the skill, effort and responsibility that it takes to do a job. So when you're evaluating a man versus a woman or a white person versus a person of color, to see whether there's compliance with the Equal Pay Act, that's what you would look at, kind of the types of, of the type of jobs they're doing. And it prohibits being paid differently for substantially similar work unless it can be justified by a legitimate factor that's completely unrelated to sex, race or ethnicity. It's enforced by the Labor Commissioner, and I apologize for not updating this. It is now also enforced by the Department of Fair Employment and Housing. Excuse me, the Civil Rights Agency, formerly the DFEH. So now workers can go to either, which is great. Go to the next slide. Something else that the California Fair Pay Act did, when it amended the Equal Pay Act, that was really important. It required that the, you have some different defenses here for an employer to use if they're paying a man differently from a woman for equal work or people of color different than white people. That last bona fide factor was amended to ensure, and in an important way, to ensure that whatever excuse, or I should say rationale defense that an employer provides for paying people differently, of different, of different genders or different races for the same job or substantially similar work, that it really has to be a legitimate, authentic bona fide factor that they actually relied on and that resulted in this wage gap, such as, as you can see, education, training or experience. And importantly, it has to be job-related and consistent with business necessities. So if an employer is paying a man, you know, $30,000 more than a woman doing the same job and the, and they are, let's say, working in sales of pharmaceuticals, if they then say, well, it's because he had a degree in English and that's why. That wouldn't be job-related and it really wouldn't be consistent with business necessities. That wouldn't be a rational defense and a lawful defense. So that was an important change in that California Fair Pay Act. And then they have to just show that that factor really accounted for the full differential. So if the guy's being paid $30,000 more a year because they have one year extra of experience, that probably wouldn't be sufficient to account for that whole $30,000 difference. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So a couple of really key transparency provisions that we updated our law with. One, and you'll see this is now addressing some of those contributors in California. Employers cannot ask about or rely upon prior pay when, when they are, when they are hiring someone. And we know that when employers rely on prior salary to set new salaries, they just perpetuate these existing gender and racial wage gaps that we all know about. So that was an important step forward in that other states, about 16, I believe now, have also done similar prohibitions. We also addressed that issue of pay secrecy rules. So in California, it's illegal for an employer to retaliate against someone for discussing, disclosing, asking about pay. This question comes up a lot. An employer doesn't have to tell a worker what someone else is being paid, but they can't retaliate against a worker for asking or discussing or disclosing their pay, which is often how these pay issues or disparities come about. And then finally, and this is, we're building upon this, as you heard with, with SB 1162, but under existing law, an employer, upon reasonable request, has to provide the pay scale or salary range to an applicant for a job. The law was further defined to say that upon reasonable request means after that person has had at least one interview. So it's, you know, it's a, it's, it was a step forward, but we're hoping to build on it with the bill that I'll go into a bit more detail at the end about. But that's the existing law right now. If they ask for it, then an employer has to provide the salary range. Next slide. And then I just wanted to note, because this question comes up a lot on prior salary, under the federal Equal Pay Act, it doesn't address prior salary directly. It just says that, you know, employer can justify a gender-based pay disparity if it's based on some other factor other than sex. And the federal courts are split on whether that other factor other than sex defense includes prior salary. Here in the Ninth Circuit, it's not, it's not, it's settled law in a, in a case called Rizzo v. Jovino, that, that under, in the Ninth Circuit, at least, under the federal Equal Pay Act, an employer cannot rely on prior salary to justify a pay differential. Here in California, though, there is no split because we made it official. We actually, you know, put it in the statute, the California Equal Pay Act, that prior salary cannot justify any gender or race-based wage differential. It is not a bona fide factor. So there's no issue for the courts to decide. Next slide. And then I'll just say, you know, in the states across the country, pay transparency is kind of a really growing trend in some of these buckets that I mentioned. And so that brings me to the last thing I'll say. And I'm sorry, Sam, I haven't been, or I've not been keeping my time, so I'm sorry if I'm over. But I'll just make one last point on the next slide. Which is that pay data collection is a huge part of pay transparency. We, at the federal level, the Obama administration, under the, the EOC, under the Obama administration, had instituted pay data reporting because of how important it is for identifying and rectifying gender and race wage gaps and also occupational segregation. So in California, when that federal rule was rolled back under the Trump administration, we responded and passed SB 973, which is current, you know, law, current in effect. And it requires employers with 100 or more employees to report pay data, broken down by gender, race, ethnicity and job category, to our Civil Rights Agency. If you have not yet seen it, I really urge you to, and I'll put it in the chat in a moment, look at the DFEH's findings. So after one year of collecting data, the DFEH pushed, published out aggregate findings, not, not company-specific, but aggregate findings. And it really is pretty startling and not really surprising, but it shows exactly what equal pay advocates had, have been saying, which is that women and people of color are concentrated in lower-paying jobs and underrepresented in higher-paying jobs. And that is a huge contributor to the overall gender and race wage gaps that we see. So that data is showing what it was supposed to and it both giving information to our state agency to hopefully enforce our laws, but also hopefully for employers to see, ooh, I have a problem. I should probably change my recruitment or my promotion or my pay practices to ensure better representation of people of all genders and all races at all levels. Um, and then on the final slide here, um, I'll just mention, uh, the, the bill that Sam, oh, sorry, the one right before, that Sam mentioned. S B eleven sixty-two, which, uh, the commission, of course, is a, is a, a cosponsor on, and that's been amazing. Uh, it passed yesterday out of its final assembly floor vote. It went through, got through its concurrents vote today, so it's headed to the governor. And as you've heard, it would, uh, require, expand on our salary range law to require it be in job postings. When employer has fifteen or more employees, which we know is critical to give workers, particularly women, information to negotiate higher pay. And then of course, to bring about that really important accountability for contract workers. So I'm sorry, I think I went a little over, um, but that is the kind of high-level overview. That's just the federal law on the last slide, if you're interested. But that's the high-level overview of kind of all the really important advances we've made here in California. I'll put my, uh, email on the Slack chat. And if anyone ever has any questions, feel free to reach out anytime.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, again, if commissioners have questions, please raise your hands. If not, we're going to keep the party going. Although I did say I was going to ask you, Jessica, what, you know, coming off the heels of eleven sixty-two, what do you tell employers or people that are worried about, you know, sort of being shamed for their pay data? And how do you help them get over that sort of initial hurdle of like panic? So if you have a quick answer to that they'd like to share, please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I actually stand by that, that quote that Sam said from one of the articles I was interviewed for, which is if you, if you have something ashamed of, maybe you should fix your data. But I will just say, the argument that some of the, the chamber and some of the business community has put forth is that these pay gaps that will be shown, uh, that may be shown, may not actually be unlawful. There may be legal justifications, but the response to that, and so it makes them look bad, they're saying, for, you know, for no, for no good reason. But the response to that is that they have the ability to explain their pay data and explain why these apparent gender and racial wage gaps are in fact justified by the law. They have an opportunity to explain it to the, uh, agencies, but also to the public, if it should be public. But also we know, and I'll put the link to the D F E H data again, uh, or not again, I will put it. Because it really does show that occupational segregation. So it gives employers a chance to say, hey, we understand we have a problem. We have, you know, thirty male executives and one woman executive and ninety percent women as administrative, you know, administrative assistants and ten percent of men. That's an issue and we're going to work on, and create, doing better outreach and, and promotional, uh, practices to ensure better representation. So I think it's an opportunity for them to show how much they're going to do to kind of fix what we know will be shown of, of structural inequities, both gender and race-based.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your work. You are a friend of commission as always. Thank you so much for your presentation. All right. So that closes out both of our hearings, our first and second hearing. I'm going to open it up for the public comment. If you could limit your comments to two to three minutes, that would be amazing. If you don't, um, I will kindly ask you to stop at the two to three minute mark. So if you have public comments or remember a public and would like to share something, please raise your hand and we will get you unmuted. Okay, I'm looking through the participants. I'm not seeing any hands. Others, Holly, others, do you have any public comment that I don't see? No public comment from my view. Okay, well, all right. Well, I'm gonna close out then. Uh, this was an incredible, incredible panel. Wow, so much information for us to sit on and, um, continue to digest as we move forward with our blueprint and other activities in the fall. Uh, I'm really, really grateful for all the speakers that joined us today and shared some testimony and shined some light on things from a different perspective, being on the ground and doing this work day in and day out. We are incredibly grateful to you all for doing that and working with us. And please let us know how we can support you in the future. Holly, do you have any last minute updates or things that we need to share before we adjourn?
No, just thank you, everything. Have a great day.
All right, um, I'm going to, uh, Tiffany, you already take a, a vote to adjourn or can I just adjourn?
Nope, you can just adjourn.
All right, we adjourned at one forty-nine. Everyone have an amazing day and a long holiday weekend and take care of yourselves. Thank you. Bye.